I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I get a motion for certification in closed session?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, on a closed session, discussed public business matters, luckily exempt from open meeting requirements as stated in the Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Moner, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Erza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Minor.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. That brings us to 3.01. Ms. Erza, could you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Minor.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Erza?
Ms. Minor.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. That takes us to 3.03, discussion on the superintendent's search process. So, I guess I would call Mr. Kastner to the -- Dr. Kastner, I'm sorry. The podium over here, nice microphone to speak in. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're happy to have the opportunity here to give you an overview of the superintendent search. We have 12 slides and we'll go through them and Dr. Harris here is going to assist me. And we also have before you, you have a packet. And on the left-hand side of the packet, you're going to find first a copy of the PowerPoint we have here in case you want to take some notes, but then we're going to have a couple sheets on the left-hand side that are going to be talking about some decisions that we're going to need your direction for. And on the right-hand side, we have some examples. We assume that every board member has had access to our proposal, so you're going to find that there is going to be a repetition. The one part of our proposal that we most recently have been adding is examples, so that you can see what a product might look like that will be customized only for your school system. So, some of these things, again, I might refer them to you because I know you've got a lot coming at you, but we would hope by the end of this evening, we would be working towards a direction that we can serve you and a situation that we can meet, which we've got a little quick timeline, but it is very doable. So, what I'd like to start with, if I may, and I think this is pertinent, we've had the opportunity most recently, spending a lot of work here in central Virginia. You can see we, Hanover, we've actually been involved in two searches. We also have been working in Chesterfield. We've also had the opportunity to work in Petersburg and I think, I guess Prince Edwards is a little bit further away, but Wayne and I, in the last five years, probably about 15 searches here in Virginia. And the things that you learn as you go across the state, you can apply as you go from one place to another, but one of the things we want to assure you that each search is unique and each group of candidates are going to be unique and there'll be certain matches that will work in one place that's not going to work in another. So, you have the opportunity to contact any of our former clients and I would have to feel pretty confident that we've been, we think they're pretty pleased with the work and the superintendents are still there. In regard to the search team, first, Dr. Harris is a former superintendent and I'm saying some of this, not that you haven't read in the proposal, but I'm also speaking to a public audience. Dr. Harris was a superintendent in Roanoke for 11 years, he retired about 2006, but previously he had spent 25 years in Fairfax and in Fairfax he was an area superintendent, which was pretty significant. One of the things that Dr. Harris bring, well, two things. First, being in the Harvard Urban Superintendent Program, he has access through that Harvard network and has access all across the country. More importantly, his work with Virginia Tech under the Aspiring Superintendent and Emerging Leaders Program, he has somewhere about 50 educators from throughout Virginia that spend three, four days with him or more throughout the school year and he's done this for the past several years, which puts him into access for every school system throughout the state. Myself, I'm a former superintendent in Albemarle County where I retired in 2006 after 11 years. I've been in interim more recently in Montgomery County and also in Shenandoah. Previous to that, I spent 25 years working in Maryland in different systems and recently as a deputy in Frederick, Maryland. So, we've had a chance to work in a lot of sizes and particularly with Wayne and I, the systems where we serve superintendencies are similar to the size you have here. So, it gives us an understanding of how it works in this size of a system. Just as importantly though, we have a national reach because all across the country, BWP is large enough that we have 50 other associates and these 50 other associates are superintendents and they pretty much are going to cover most of the states throughout the country and so that access gives us a chance to know people that know people. And the fact is, Wayne and I have been around for a while and we've known people through the years that are going to help us maybe vet some of these candidates far deeper than just their, the contacts that they're going to give us for their references. In going through the process here that will support you in finding the best candidate, we can tell you, we know it works. We know that we can find a way to create community support and staff support by engaging them in the process. We'd like to also compliment your school board that when you bring in a search company, you're putting a lot of trust in your community because it's your community that's going to have totally access to the information that we will report back to you in a public way. When we're here and we're going to be meeting with 150 or more people, we're going to get online data, all this information is totally transparent and available. And is that a risk? No, it's a good way of doing business. It's a way that we can get a snapshot of your community and the time we'll spend, share it with the board and use that to develop a leadership profile. So, we think community engagement is a strength of this process because hiring a superintendent, which is the board's most important job, we feel, by doing that, it will evolve your community, it extends the board members through their community. We will do aggressive recruitment, we will find highly qualified candidates. I would say our goal is to make your job hard. We would want you to have a difficult job picking who you think is the best match. We'll complete this on time, we'll stay at the budget that you've already had and we hope we're going to meet your expectations. There's four parts to a superintendent's search process and as you will find that these parts build upon each other. In the specification stage, which is what we're in right now, we're the beginning trying to find information from your employees, talk about the qualities and skills you're looking for, we're talking about creating a leadership profile, seeking board's approval and using that to post the vacancy. And then we begin recruiting the candidates. You're already up on our website, so we've already started the process, but we don't have the details that we'll have in the next few days. In this engagement process, we will interview each board member, we can do it in groups of two, we could do it individually. And during those interviews, I'd like you to know that we don't attribute to any individuals. Anything we do is not putting names on it. We're trying to get the quality of the ideas and we will ask the same questions. And the questions, by the way, on the right-hand side, there's four questions, we'll ask every group we have the same four questions as we will with the board members. We're going to rely on the school system and the guidance from the school board and the staff to make sure we get the right people to the meetings, but we also will have public forums that are available to anybody in the evening. And how many we have on that, we'll determine, how you have them geographically, we'll go in whatever your school system practices. We also have an online survey. Now, in the packet, you notice that there's an example of the online survey. We found that this survey has been tried and true and we could customize it individually and we have in some cases, but this online survey, which will be available for a period of 45 to 60 days, normally I would expect 500-plus people will contribute and that will give us quantitative information that balances qualitative information when we do the community engagement. And again, all this data will be available to you. Once we have that and we provide from the specifications, after we do the community engagement sometime in December, we will come back to the school board and we will share all that information, it becomes public record. At that point, we'll talk about recruiting candidates, we're talking about recommending advertisements to national publications and ones that we know that will get you the best bang for the buck and we'll make sure that we look at this not just as a state search but a national search. We also will have through our network nominations, you have an attractive school system, people know who you are and we'll have people that will contact us. When we get to the point of marketing, we'll make sure that you see the vacancy announcement and posting, we'll talk about your system, we'll talk about the location you have. You can see we recommend Ed Week, we use AASA, sometimes ASCD, Wayne has his Harvard network, you also have access to VSPA. They will also run everything online. Once we begin the process and we get into the assessment and we talk about looking at the online application, applicants have to do an online application. They have to submit a resume, they have to submit transcripts, they have to submit references, they have to submit answers to certain questions that will begin the vetting process on whether we think that they meet your match. Some will be superintendents, some will be people that are want to be superintendents and every once in a while, we have people apply that are in the non-education sector. We might have someone from the Pentagon apply, we might have someone apply that's from a university. So, we want to keep it inclusive and let anyone apply that would like. And we go through and we get to a point of conducting informal interviews and then we would get to a point also where Wayne and I would do multiple conversations with candidates. We will not bring anyone before you that we haven't met personally or through Skype. There'll be no surprises. And so, we need this type of depth because you do not want any surprises and we want to make sure that doesn't happen. So, when it gets into these reference checks, I can assure you, we go deep. We have to go deep. And in that way, that will create a confidence of knowing if these people are going to be attractive candidates for you and they meet the guidelines that you're asking for in your leadership profile. When it gets to the point of selection, we will present these candidates to the school board. Now, school board members, you need to understand, we will try to give you four to six that we think best meet the match, but we will have open access for you to see 100% of the candidate pool. We will explain to you people we chose or didn't choose and explain why. You are in control that if all of a sudden there's a name that you might find, you want more information that isn't in our list, then we'll go and we'll provide that for you. So, that type of access, we want you to know that you can count on. When we get to the point of when you're getting ready to pick who you might want to interview, we will give you sample questions related to your profile that might assist you when you get to the point of the interview and knowing that there might be different sets of questions you would use for initial interviews and for second interviews if you bring people back. At the whole time, we're here to assist you. Now, we are not there when you're doing the interview, you're doing that independently of this, but we're preparing you for that. And again, through the process, usually what happens, the board designates who we will talk to. It will be usually, the designated person in many cases is the board chair. So, we use that person to give the information as we go through and give us some direction along the way and then how you normally work with the board, we trust the chair to do it in your normal customary ways. The thing that we want to get to tonight, and this has to do with getting to the point of talking to a timeline, and here, when we get to this last page here, Wayne and I together would like to go through on the left-hand side and I think we can be most expedient if we start with this sheet where it talks about search details. Do each of you have that sheet?
I like to see it.
I've chosen to highlight it mainly because I'm trying to create as much efficiency that we get these things done so we can get this process started as soon as possible.
Let me ask a question before we go through the draft next steps. Do you have any questions that you would like to pose about your involvement, beginning at the selection process where Kevin and I will present to you a slate of candidates? It needs to be made very clear that we are presenting candidates to the board that we believe are the best match and fit based on the leadership profile that you would have approved. That leadership profile we bring to you in draft format based on all of the input we've received during the two-day community engagement meetings, interviews and forums. You make all of the decisions around this. We bring to you a draft profile. The board then says, that profile is the profile that describes what we are looking for in the next candidate. We then review applications and do all of the vetting. We come back to you in a closed meeting and we present to you the four to six candidates from the pool who have applied, that best match and fit what you say you're looking for. You make the decisions, we don't make any decisions. We are presenting to you the four to six candidates that we believe are the best match and then you are going to be making decisions. We want to be clear that we are bringing to you recommendations, we're presenting to you, but we are not decision makers, it's all you. So, do you have any questions about any part of the process as we've described it? Do we need to review anything else before we get to this point?
Yeah, I just have, the only question I have is, will you, my assumption is that we will know if you have a personal relationship with various whoever, whoever, I think that must be a challenge anyway because you're going to know a lot of people that are applying for the superintendent.
Let me, let me address that directly. It is true that as long as Kevin and I've been around, we know a lot of people. I've been in this business 48 years. Kevin has been in this business a long time. We have no direct personal relationship on the basis of 15 searches that we've done. We have no direct relationship with any of the candidates. They apply online, we vet based on the profile that you have established. We have no other connection, we have no standard pool of candidates that we simply match up with a search. This search begins from the beginning, when you tell us go, we then look for applicants to apply. If they're individuals that we know, we say, if you're interested, you should apply. I will tell you that last Friday, in a meeting with 10 Harvard graduates, I said to the director, Williamsburg James City County is looking for a new superintendent, if you are aware of any candidates who you believe are worthy to apply. She sent that email out right away, I have no idea who those people will apply. And we do that, so we have no direct connection, we don't have anyone, we say you're not applying, we'll give you a leg up. We do not operate that way, we have never operated that way. You can count on the fact that our names are on the line, integrity is important to us, we have no direct relationship with any candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions that you might have? What we've attempted to do is to give you a brief overview, we don't want to shortchange you, but if you have information that you need that we haven't shared, there are some other information that we'll come out with the next steps. One of the other things that we have found works the best to get the richest pool of candidates is that we recommend you have a confidential search. Now, let me explain.
You're ahead of us a little bit. Am I too far ahead? Well, I think we're going to have to talk about it anyway, so go ahead.
Okay.
You'll notice that's one of the highlighted areas that we think needs to be discussed.
The reason I'm putting that on the table goes back to this whole notion of are there people that we know personally? The important point here is the community engagement upfront gives the entire community an opportunity to share qualities and characteristics that you want in your next superintendent. We use that information upfront as we are going through the process to determine who's best match and fit. Let me stop.
Well, I think the, we recommend confidentiality to get the best pool. And let me give you an example. About a year ago this time, Montgomery County was advertising for a superintendent, it was an open search. So, anybody that applied, they knew that in the end, it was going to be an open process and the candidates would be publicly vetted. They brought three people that were assistant superintendents and their finalists and they chose what I think was going to be a good person for their superintendency. However, there were no superintendents. The reason is, a lot of superintendents don't want to take the risk of applying for a job that they might not get and maybe cause a relationship to go downhill with the board, wondering why they want to leave. So, we know from experience that if we're going to get the best pool possible, that a confidential search is the norm in most places. However, you make that call, not us. And so, that is something that we do have to know and get direction because when candidates are going to apply, they're going to ask us and we need to be transparent on whatever the board's wishes are going to be on that. Now, you could make that decision among yourselves now, but we would need to know that very shortly on what direction you wanted to give us.
Yeah, you could have levels of confidentiality, can't you, in this process?
We've seen that, let me give you an example. Gutsam wanted to bring their finalists in to a select group, 20 people, that they asked the two finalists to give a presentation. They asked the people that were hearing the presentation to sign a confidentiality agreement that they would not discuss the names of those people. It was successful, they were able to give the board some information on their impression of the two presentations of the candidates and so in that way, you could say they had some acts, they had some external input. That's just one example that I'm familiar with. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's a level, but we'll, I know we're going to be discussing that, so I'll, I'll reserve my other comments unless we're going to start doing that now.
Well, I'll tell you the truth, the issue of confidentiality, and I'm leaving this up to the board chair, if you want to discuss it further right now, it is one of the things that we will need some direction on. If not tonight, in the near future, so that we can tell them how this search is going to be conducted.
It is a question that candidates will ask us as we are vetting them. Will my name be made public prior to me getting notification that I'm a finalist?
Or that you got the job?
Yes, correct.
So, what I believe I heard you say was that you think when the, when the search is not confidential, you diminish the number of applicants?
Yes, and more often than not, it's the superintendents who tend to be more experienced, highly qualified, who are not willing to risk damaging the relationship that they have with their current board. They at least want to know that they're a finalist, not just that they're in the pool of candidates being considered.
It wouldn't show assistant associate superintendents and they're, they're good ones. We all started that way ourselves, so, but we are saying for sitting superintendents, it does chill the pool.
And that was the case in Montgomery recently.
Why, should we discuss that?
Yeah.
Yeah, my feeling is, I'm, I have no issue with the confidentiality all the way up to when you identify your three or four finalists. I happen to believe that those three or four finalists, if we're going to invite them in, need, there needs to be some kind of a forum where they, not 20 people, they get to address and talk to the citizens of this community.
Then all I can tell you is, that's the inscription we talked to you about Montgomery County.
Right.
And you would get the same result. You would, you would lose potential superintendent candidates. We're here to tell you the pros and cons. We aren't here to tell you what you have to choose.
See, I, my half, I guess, is the whole issue of transparency for me really gets tossed out the window when you start talking like that, so I.
Well, the 16 searches we've had, I would just say, which I think have, we've been able to get the best pools that way. However, there are systems that have done it the other way and that's a call that the school board has to make.
Our best advice is until you have finalists, their names should not be.
Oh, I totally agree with that, absolutely. No, that, I don't want you to misunderstand, what I'm saying is that when you have, if you narrow it down to three and we decide on those three, we want them to come in and we want them to, to speak to the, answer questions from the public. I mean, after all, you better, you know, if they haven't already learned how to do that, I'd like to see how well they're, well, they do do that. Because I don't want to hear things like, well, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, you know, I don't do well in public, I'm kind of.
Well, Dr. Beers, the only thing I would say to you.
Sorry?
I understand your point.
Okay.
But we, when we do reference checks and when we know people, if they're sitting superintendents, we'll know how they are in front of a group, we will know if they can't effectively communicate, they wouldn't meet our, they would not meet the criteria that would I think reach the standard that you would expect. So, this is where some of the expertise that we have in the years we've been doing this and such, that we're not going to bring you someone like that, but I, but I do understand the option of wanting to see it firsthand is an option that you might want to consider. But we would also try to prevent that type of surprise ever happening.
Okay, I, I guess, let me rephrase what I just said. I don't, I don't want a superintendent continually tell us as board or members of the board that he's a, an introvert. I'm not an extrovert, I don't, I don't want to hear about that. It's not an excuse, if you're going to be a superintendent, you better be an extrovert.
Might I say that the reasons that candidates have said to us their preference is confidentiality does not have anything to do with their ability to speak publicly, has to do with getting sideways with their.
Well, I understand that.
Let me tell you, one other thing that, that can be.
So, I've seen, I've seen both examples of word, both confidential and non-confidential. So, I, so I know you could still get extremely confident.
I think it's a matter for you to decide.
What are other board members thinking?
Yeah, I've said enough.
Other, other board members?
I, I don't have any questions about the confidentiality, what I do have a question about.
What I do have a question about is, I'm looking up here, it says, receives and reviews applications, screens applications. Is there a preliminary application that's not quite as detailed as a full one? The reason I'm asking that is because if they're an acting superintendent already, that's putting an awful lot of pressure on them. I mean, if they're not going to qualify, I mean, I guess you could say, is there different levels of application?
So they go online and they fill out the complete application?
The whole thing?
They're not an applicant until they have submitted that application and the application is complete. So if they look at it, we believe if they're worthy to be considered, they should be willing to take the time and be thoughtful, complete that application. We then get a notice that their application is complete. It's at that point that we then begin to review each application and start to determine, are they a good match and a good fit to the profile that you've approved?
Will the board be able to see the application?
When we present to the board the candidates that we believe are good fit and match, you get to see the complete application packet for the four to six that we bring, but you have a list, which we're going to cover. You're going to get to see every applicant's name and their specific information about them, and we talk to you as to why they were not among the four to six that we bring to you. So you have access to the entire list.
Okay, I guess that wasn't my question, although I appreciate the information. What I'm asking is, prior to anyone applying, the questions after you meet with the board, does that somewhat determine what is on the application? The questions that are on the application?
No, the application is a standard application that we use.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Any other board members?
So I'm in favor of a completely confidential search, although I'm happy to support the majority of the board in whatever decision that is. But the reason that I'd like to have a completely confidential search that reveals the successful applicant when that person is appointed as superintendent by this board is because I think it will net this board and therefore the community the best applicant pool, and I think that's our job. Also, I think it's one of our primary responsibilities to select a superintendent. So somehow, in part, handing that to someone else is a concern of mine. And lastly, in terms of perception, if we do make public, whether it's just names or presentation or whatever, however we want to go about making the finalists public, whether they do a presentation or if they just announce in the newspaper, people in this community will form opinions. And so that leads us to a position where if people wanted candidate A and we picked candidate B, then that person is already starting kind of at a deficit with at least some population. So I think for the best candidate pool and for doing our job and doing our job well as we're required, I support that. But then again, I'll support the majority of the board ones.
May?
I think you want the largest pool possible for your selection purposes. And this really is our selection of a superintendent. It's not a community election of a superintendent. That does take place in other countries, states, and other jurisdictions, but that's not what we're responsible for under the COVID regime. We're responsible for the selection of our appropriate. So there's a big difference. If you were in Broward County, where you elect your superintendent, then that would be what would happen, but that's not what we do.
I'm also in support of Kira, Kira's opinion about the confidentiality. I can see Dr. Beers' points. I just think that we should make sure that that's part of the profile that we build, that we, and I'm sure the community will voice their opinions about what kind of attributes they want Williamsburg James City County superintendent to have, and that once that input is received and we build a profile, that our job as a board would be to try to get the largest pool of applicants that we can get, and then do our due diligence as a board and make the decision.
From my point of view, I think we want the highest quality candidate pool we can get. I think we get that from a closed search. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. But like Mrs. Cook said, I am willing to support where the consensus of the board, but it sounds like the consensus of the board is wrapping around confidentiality.
Well, I'm supporting that position also. I didn't hear from Holly. Holly, what do you think?
Again, I can see both sides of this argument. Of course, we want to be transparent to the community and receive their input, that, you know, we are tasked with this, so we can take the information and utilize it in our search. I agree.
All right. Well, it's my decision, I guess. Consensus of the board, I think, is confidential.
So let me turn it back to Dr. Kastner, and he can go on with his next steps.
In part of the beginning process of community engagement, we're recommending the week of November 28. And the board would need to confirm those dates because we'd have to have staff contact, invite people, and organize. And during that week, Friday's not the best day. So we had talked about a couple potential dates. Do you remember the dates, Jim, that we were talking about?
I think we were talking about November 29th and 30th, Tuesday, Wednesday, so that minimizes our travel time. So if we're looking to have community engagement activities that week, this is where I'd be in my calendar. So that's the 29th, 30th, and you have Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving's the week before.
Yeah, it's the week before. But I guess what I'm looking to collect is who in the community needs to be engaged, not only from a...
A wait, a waitlist.
Waitlist, that's correct. So it's not only from an organizational perspective, you know, individuals, that kind of thing. So if we looked at having that to, if, you know, board members can forward that, their recommendations for community engagement to Mrs. Serso by the 16th of November, does that work?
It's too late.
Too late, 14th? 14th is Monday?
Well, the invitations have to go out. Yeah, I would say ASAP.
Well, it's two weeks before, so that looks to me like, it's the first, that's the ninth.
Okay, but then it's going to take time to get that.
What do you want, Mrs. Cook?
Well, I'm just, you know, there's 150 people, they said. That's a heck of a party.
Let me give you a little bit, I don't want to get so far down in the week. So this is what the two days would look like. Kevin and I would start as early as we needed to, 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning. We don't, we generally don't do these, two of us in the same room with a group. So it could run all day long with us doing separate groups and/or individuals up until 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. Please give us time to, you know, have a slight break. And then we could have two forms. One could be at 6:00 in one place, one could be at 6:00 in another. And then we could do another one at, say, 7:45, so you could get essentially four forms, two per night, and then meetings all day long, about every 40 minutes, 30 to 45 minutes, with a break in between, 15, 10-minute break in between. We've done as many as 30 to 35 meetings if we start that early and go into the meeting.
Between the two of you?
Between the two, yes, not 30.
Now, in the back of your, of the RFP that we presented, there was an example proposal. There is an example of just certain things to consider, and also an example of different groups. Each community is different on what these groups might be. So your help together as a collective group is just make sure we don't leave anybody out. And it works.
Everybody has an opportunity to participate in one of the forums. It's making sure that you've identified the other categories of individuals and/or groups so that you have a complete, a microcosm of the community to have.
Or a macrocosm.
Macrocosm, correct.
So if anybody, everybody could collect those names and those organizations and get those to Janet by Friday, which is looking like the 4th to me. You know, we want people who come to our board meetings, and we want the Education Association, the foundation, so all those advisory groups. Yeah, so if we can get those to Janet so she can collect those for us and then kind of put that together, I think that would be good. And give us a good heads up on organizing those community engagement forums.
Now, a couple other things. The electronic, when we're taking the survey, we will customize it with your logo and everything, and we want to run that by it and make sure the boards are comfortable. And we can change a line or two if there's something unique you want. We also want you to make you know when we get that information and we present it to you, we also can disaggregate it by people within the system, people without the system. But that also has to have some information. Also, on your right-hand side, we're going to try to write the one-pager as we figure out the details of the dates and everything. We're going to work with your marketing groups or your people to make sure we attractively represent your community in trying to get this proposal. We've given you an example of another community, but again, we're going to make sure that that has to be vetted before we're going to put anything out publicly. So we are going to need the help of staff on that, but we also, again, we're going to rely on how you disseminate it so the board sees it before it's out there. So this is the type of thing, all this is going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
When do you need this? When do you need the...
Well, I would think next week, we'd like to maybe put it together. Some of it, again, we can start on as early as tomorrow, but the key is maybe giving it our first shot with staff, letting board members see it, make suggestions, and make it go back through the chair.
So is the 4th a good date for the staff to, or is that not giving...
Well, let's say, I'd like to have it, I'd like to have it early next week. I'd like to get final product, backward map from how we want to get the involvement in it. It can go pretty quickly because your HR department is using a lot of this basic information for any of your recruiting, and we do the same. But we don't want to make those decisions of what it is that you want in your language.
So Tim, do you have something already kind of boiler... No, boilerplate. Boilerplate for the county.
Sure.
Yeah, I think Betsy probably has a good feel for that.
Ms. Silvercap Smith is out the rest of this week.
Where is she going?
Just right behind you.
Where is she going?
Personal business.
I know, I checked that out before I sat down. So, okay, we'll, we can...
The quick one is the website.
Now, when we're looking at this calendar and we're backward mapping, we know that in early February, you've got to get this done based on 180-day limits. We are recommending that we close the search on January 20. We think between January 20th and February 7th, you can get both sets of interviews in. You can get negotiations done. It's going to be tight, but board availability for those interviews during that window, and I know it's a busy time for you because you've got budgets and you've got other stuff going on, that's the way we can maximize having the information out there. So again, you don't have to decide it tonight, but we need to sign it before we can put this out. We've got to have a deadline for when applications are due.
Is there any way that we can have, even like the Ginsie County or City of Williamsburg, like whatever their verbiage is for advertising their community?
Both of their economic development departments have fairly robust language that can be lifted, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can put this thing together pretty quickly between now and Friday.
The bigger issue is with the deadline being January 20th, the timeframe for you to do initial and final interviews is really tight.
Yeah.
It's really tight, and if you're going to be doing initial interviews of six candidates, it's about an hour.
Hour and a half, recommend two days.
And you're going to be meeting them off-site because of confidentiality reasons.
Right.
So they'll be traveling well. So is there any way we could possibly, so the application deadline is January 20th, can we back it up five days?
The answer is yes. We were just trying to triage it. We're trying to maximize. Here's the thing that, here's the thing that I know. The whole holiday season, you're kind of messing around with it a little bit, and you're also messing around with Thanksgiving. So I was just, the answer is yes, and I think that you're going to, you as board members are just going to have to think about that, but we're going to need to have the answer. We're going to need to have the answer that when we get the, when we get the profile or the advertisement.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, it's certainly going to be a commitment on our part end of January. The actual, I think the actual 180-day clock runs out on us on the February 11th. So February 7th is a sprinkly scheduled board meeting, so if we, Tim can...
A special meeting.
Yeah, so we can call a special meeting if we have to. And, you know, one of the things, what we were looking at is doing the initial interviews, January 27th and 28th, and then doing final interviews on February 2nd as kind of notional dates to lock out the calendars for. And so then you have the 2nd until the 7th, or actually the 11th, to do negotiations and that kind of thing. So it's...
You need to get this board member sort of blocks out the time.
Right. So it's an aggressive timeline. We're kind of put in this because of the 180-day clock that comes from the, comes from the General Assembly. Now, I also understand that the 180 days is not when the next superintendent has to start, 180 days is when you have to announce, so...
So what's that 180-day, what's that...
February 11.
February 11.
Could we back up to January 15, to the 20?
Yeah, one of the things, if you back up to January 15, then you, and if you want some of the advertising out for 60 days, that takes you January 15, December 15, November 15, which is aggressive on the front end to get, to get advertising out. So it's tough either way, right?
We can make either one work. But we wanted to put a date out there, we wanted to put a date out there that kind of...
You're going to have to leave it the 20th, just because the community profile's only going to really be finalized in that week of the 28th.
Right.
The first week of December.
Correct. So I guess, I guess what I'd like to make sure, you know, board members have those dates, dates on their calendar, 27, 28, February 2nd, January 23rd. We'd probably have to, I think that's a special meeting. I don't think there's a first and second, first and third doesn't sound against the January 23rd. Is that right?
For example.
Well, we put that date out again. If you miss it by one day, we'd rather miss the next day, but...
Yeah, so I think our regularly scheduled meetings, what are we looking at, Janet, for January?
Third is the first one.
Third is the first one, Tuesday? So we'd regularly be third and 17, but we might want to put 23rd as a special meeting for where we're going to get...
23rd, Monday or that Tuesday?
Monday.
I would say Monday.
We need about two hours.
Because we got to be done Friday and Saturday to do interviews, and then we have, which also means you have to get people here from wherever they might be.
Okay, so just basically block off in the entire...
Last couple of weeks of January. And you'll be set.
The 23rd, the 27th, the 28th, the 2nd.
Okay, 23rd, 27th, 28th, 2nd.
And, yeah.
And then the 7th will be our normal, a normal meeting.
Okay, but at least I can mark those dates.
Right.
What's your budget?
The rest of this is going to be a little bit easier. First off, we've seen it done both ways, where a school system might put a salary out, which usually is a combination of base salary plus annuity. But normally, we've seen language that probably works... But normally, we've seen language that probably works better for you if you just say regionally competitive, commensurate with experience. And it gives more latitude up there when you're looking at a candidate to see if they've been a superintendent before, to see if they haven't been, to see if they've been in another district and they were, you look at whatever their compensation was, and it gives you more flexibility than putting something down. They're going to figure it out, it's public record. They know what your previous superintendent made, they know what the superintendents in Virginia. So instead of putting a number out there, we would be, we recommend using regionally competitive. If you're comfortable with that, that's the language we would, we would put in. Okay, next thing, in regard to advertising, the advertising that we're going to recommend to you is pretty similar in most districts like yourselves, and that is an ad in, an ed week costs about $1,200 to $1,400, but then you can put an electronic ad for 60 days for $450. That, we would think, would be a minimum. We also can put the VSBA ad, we can put our school system, or the website for BWP, we have the Harvard connection, and there might be some other connections that you might have in your local community where we could do this advertisement. But the expense that we're recommending is similar to what other districts your size would be using. If you were a very small district and you knew you weren't going to attract nationally, then you might not want to go the full route on the ed week. But we think that you're going to attract a national audience, not just a Virginia audience, and to keep all options open, this is the advertising plan we'd recommend. And we again would run by the advertising copies through your board chair before we would put anything out publicly. Any comments on the advertising?
I don't see us quibbling over the advertising. I think that's a, that's a good marketing strategy, different plan for that, so. I don't, once other board members have comments?
No, I'm good.
Yep.
If you look on the second page and we talked about your web posing, we're going to have to decide at one point when you get to your finalist of the employment background check, and we don't know what you've done in the past. We have found it best to be done locally with whatever you normally might have done in your past searches. We don't have to decide that yet, but you'd only do that to cut down the cost for your finalist candidates. So with that being in mind, and you look what's in your packet, the timeline, the decisions that you've had, and then you look on the right-hand side where you're talking about the product that we're going to get and the questions, that's the information that will put us on our way. And Wayne, is there anything else we have not covered?
One of the things we, you did mention before about interviews with board members.
Yes.
I think in the cast we mentioned that you were going to be at VSBA, if that was an option for some board members to meet on or about the...
We'll be at VSBA, probably not on Friday, but also Wayne and I sometimes, if we're going to drive in, we'll be in the night before.
And so I could meet with, I could do three, three board members, could schedule them 45 minutes apart, you do them, I can come as early as I needed to, so I could do board members at that point.
Okay, why don't I reach out to the board members and see what works for each of you and, and schedule that to, to meet before we do that meeting? Because we can do it VSBA or we can do it also at the 28th, 29th, and 30th.
Kevin will be at VSBA, I will not be there.
That's right.
Another commitment, but I will come in as early on the 28th as I need to.
Okay, so, you know, look at your calendars for the 28th and/or the VSBA conference, the Wednesday and Thursday, right, not the, not the Friday, so.
So that is the 16th, something like that?
Yeah, 16th.
16, 17, I think is right.
I'll be out of town at another conference, so I'll meet on the 28th when you come in.
Okay. Any particular time on the 23rd, just what, morning, afternoon, evening?
Monday, I forget what day, what days.
That is a Tuesday.
28th is a Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll be coming in from Roanoke, I prefer you not do it in the morning on the 28th.
How about 1 o'clock?
I'll try to get here by 3:00 if I needed to, I could get here at 3:00.
But even the next day, the two days we're here, we could give a board member a slot during any of that window.
I could do it with Jim on that, or do you want to do it individually?
No, I'll do it with you.
How about if Jim and I?
You all work out the schedule, I'll be available.
Okay, so...
Work it out how we'd like.
Okay.
What else do you need to know from us?
I think, I think we, I think we look at the job ahead of us and realize we have some work to do, so.
Our pledge to you is we will bring you candidates and our goal is to make it difficult for you to choose, that we bring you candidates that match and fit in such a way that you will say, my goodness, which one? And that is our goal.
And that would be, that would be good. The superintendent, you know, is a lot of work, but it's the only employee this board has, and it's a critical, critical position not only for the, for the board, but for the school system and for the community at large, so.
Mr. Kelly, you're going to work this stuff on...
Well, the other point I'd like to, excuse me.
Sorry.
The other point, just an observation, we've found that as the board goes through the superintendent's search process, it really is a unifying effort for a community as you're bringing all your people together. Also, all of the information we're collecting becomes part of a profile that doesn't happen this way every year, and that's also entry information that will assist you as you're asking your candidates questions, but also the fact that the candidates themselves are going to have access, so they can use that also of not coming in just without any of that type of qualitative and quantitative data. So it works pretty well, and we've always found it to be very positive because we do think that it does positively bring a community together at this point.
Good. Any other questions, comments from board members?
We thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and thank you for the good work that you will be doing, so appreciate it. All right, it moves along to the more routine stuff, 1.01 announcement, superintendent's report, Dr. Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, the division launched an opportunity for community input in the renaming of Rawlsburg Elementary School. In late October, Rawlsburg started having age-appropriate classroom conversations about why the name of their school is changing. At that point, students were asked for their name suggestions. Each class submitted one name for consideration by the entire Rawlsburg student body and staff, and an online election will be held to ensure that every student and staff member's votes are considered. The online opportunity for community input launched yesterday is based on student name suggestions. This survey is posted on the Rawlsburg and WJCC websites and will be open until November 13th, 2016. The committee is working to ensure that the community is aware and will also provide offline opportunities to vote for a preferred name. The community input survey includes a field for other suggestions, and those names will also be considered for presentation to the school board. After all the votes have been tallied and additional suggestions from the community have been considered, the Rawlsburg renaming committee will present three options to the board in January. All three WJCC middle schools recently participated in the Virginia Theater Association Conference. Students attended workshops and performances and completed, competed, sorry, in a one-act play competition. Tuano Middle School won a gold award and a special award for scoring in the top three, and Berkeley Middle and Hornsby Middle received silver awards. Individual cast members were also recognized. Berkeley, Best Actress, Nea Mootsher. All-star cast, Ryan Holcomb. Tuano, Best Actress, Emma Matkins. All-star cast, Jashawn Dixon Crowe and Kaitlin Rains. And at Hornsby, All-Star cast, Bridget Palermo and Catherine Fair. Congratulations to all three schools and their theater teachers, Linda Gallant from Berkeley, Matt Sanderson from Hornsby, and Star Cortez from Tuano. Mr. Chair, those are all of the announcements I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any announcements from, from board members this evening? I think I have a couple of, today's your birthday, could you raise your hand? I would say happy birthday, but I don't want to do that either. But thank you, thank you both of you for sharing your birthday with the, with the school board tonight.
It's a pleasure.
And the community. So gracious she is. And also, tonight would be our, our last meeting with Mrs. Meyer. If only I had a gift, oh wait. So Ronnie, where do you want us? On camera or are you, you want us on camera somewhere or?
It's live streaming.
Let me come to the podium here. So, Mrs. Meyer, I want to thank you for, for standing up to agree to do this and, and your experience has been invaluable to, to the board and to, to this group, and I know it's one of those things that maybe you weren't yahoo, but we do appreciate, we do appreciate everything you did, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
You want a picture?
Picture, picture. I would like to, to quality, actually.
Want a picture with all of us? All of us? All of us?
Sure. I'm wondering if we can have like a new position, ex officio member emeritus? There'd be some people that would want to do that.
There are too many people that want that position.
Yeah, that could be a challenge. Where are we all going? Can we see what is disclosed?
Well, you should be in the center.
Yeah, you need to be in the center. Yay. My favorite thing, pictures.
Thank you. I've been kicking that mag all night, so I'm kind of...
Is that what you're saying?
You can't open it, I don't, I don't think it can be damaged by being kicked.
Yes, it's a surprise, it comes in a small, small cubical box.
How many of those do you have?
I think it's a Jefferson, I have several, I have a big drawer.
But not one like that?
Not one like this? No, not those.
Show it.
Thank you. Jefferson cup, my year of service?
I did.
Thank you all.
It'll take another couple months to recover.
That takes us to 5.01 citizen comments. We have one speaker card this evening, so Dr. Beers.
Okay, when your name is called, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and your county or city of residence for the record. Please no clapping or other outbursts in support or against the speaker's comments. We respect everyone's comments and concerns. Personal matters are not handled in public session, please refrain from making reference to specific individuals, whether positive or negative. The board is interested in hearing your comments, however, the board does not generally respond to those comments. When your time is up, please stop talking. We need to respect the time of the speaker after you and the time of the board meeting. A reminder that speakers may not yield minutes to another speaker. Speakers shall address their remarks to the school board. Mr. Chairman, my directions are complete.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Cook?
Mr. Philip Kennedy, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kennedy.
I was here last month talking about the discipline disparity that exists in a school. And let me first say that I looked at the data from the previous year, specifically Lafayette, and they have had an 80% decrease in their discipline that's reported to the state, so that's good, so that's actually great. I wanted to say that first and foremost. As reported to the safety in school report that goes to Vyo, Clareburg, Baker, Matoka, Mathewellie, and Norwich has consistently maintained zero offenses in categories such as offenses against students, offenses against staff, offenses against other persons, disruptive or disorderly behavior, and all other offenses. However, three of our schools consistently have, have consistently reported significantly higher numbers, and those schools are DJ Montague, J Blaine Blatton, and James River. These schools tend to be our larger minority population schools. Since 2013, 2014, these numbers have steadily increased. James River Elementary alone has reported more offenses than any other of our eight elementary schools combined. Excluding James River, DJ Montague is the second, and that has reported more offenses than our seven of our other elementary schools combined. And lastly, J Blaine Blatton has reported more than five of our other schools combined. As far as our middle schools, Tuano, which has historically had the most offenses, they also reported an 80% decrease in their offensive last year. Unfortunately, both Hornsby and Berkeley has saw increase over 100% in those categories, some cases almost nearly triple digits. Our three high schools, as I mentioned, Lafayette has decreased, however, data has revealed increases in other offenses at all of our high school. Warhill has had more disorderly and disruptive behavior offenses than our other two high schools combined and has had a 110% increase in other offenses against person. Both Lafayette and Jamestown also have seen a 41% and 46% increase in alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-related offenses, while Warhill has somehow maintained zero offenses, offenses for the 2015, 2016 school year. I do find that it's imperative that the board takes a look at these numbers and how data is reported to the state. We, we quickly say that we are number one in that unlikely category because of the way data is reported to the state, but it is disturbing that our high schools have such, I'm going to rephrase it, all of our schools tend to have such disparity in how they report data, so there does not seem to be any uniform consistency, and I guess it's left up to the principals. But these numbers are very, very disturbing, particularly James River Elementary, which is our IB elementary school, but it has consistently, over the last three years, numbers increased for disorderly conduct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. That takes us to 6.01 fiscal year 2018, 2027 capital improvement plan first discussion. Dr. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We're going to give the, the board some more information about the capital improvement plan this evening, and Ms. Berta is here to bring that information to the board. Going to focus in particular on a ranking for the county. Thank you, Ms. Berta.
Thank you, Dr. Aaron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As we presented the last board meeting, we did share the superintendent's recommendation for the capital improvement plan. As I stated at that time, we were having a meeting with the county to discuss the process to make sure we clearly understood what was expected for the planning commission to meet the needs of the James City County Planning Commission. With that being said, just to give you an overview, when you adopt your, or approve your capital improvement plan in December, that is a comprehensive plan that is made up of both capital maintenance projects and capital projects, which both have different definitions when we pass those on to our funding partners. Capital projects that are defined, and I'll go over exactly what that means in just a minute, are what require ranking from the James City County Planning Commission, not your capital maintenance projects. So according to the criteria from James City County for this project, for this process, a capital project is defined as a project that equals a total cost in excess of $50,000, is the modernization of a building, or changes and/or changes the current county footprint. Examples... Economic development, 15%. Health and public safety, 15%. The impact on the operational budget, 10%. Regulatory compliance, 10%. Timing and location, 10%. And they do have a special caveat that a special consideration is given to a project that is mandated, protects the immediate health, safety, or general welfare of the residents, or has a significant external source of funding that can be used for a Ranking of projects is required over five years, so there are portions of your plan that are picked out to meet the qualifications of these projects. Included in your documentation this evening is an updated superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan with a parentheses asterisk parentheses next to the projects that meet the requirement of the county. There are a total of 15 projects that meet these requirements. The listing on the slides, as well as in your packet, is the administration's recommendation for order of those projects. This is what we're going to discuss tonight to say, do you want to make changes to this so we know exactly how to pass this information on to the James City County Planning Commission? This is what we want to talk about. So the first project in our capital improvement plan that meets the requirement is the DJ Montague parking lot corrections. This is one of those special circumstance projects because it is a regulatory change, so that's why it's number one. The second project is the Jamestown core space cafeteria expansion. Knowing that our enrollment at high school in Jamestown particularly is above capacity, we want to address that issue and expand that core space and cafeteria use is a safety issue according to administration's thought process. The third project and the next several projects are entrance redesign projects. We ordered those by the year that they appear in the capital improvement plan. So DJ Montague and Norge would occur in fiscal year 18. Berkeley Middle School and Lafayette would occur in fiscal year 19. James River and Stonehouse and Tohano would occur in 2020. Rawlsburg would occur in 2021. That is the 10th and final entrance redesign in our ranking. The 11th project is a maintenance project, the Mathewellie Elementary parking lot expansion in fiscal year 19. The 12th project is the Berkeley Middle School baseball refurbishment in 2021. The 13th project would be Berkeley Middle School, the well removal in fiscal year 2021. And the 14th and 15th project would be the design of the high school expansion, as well as the construction of the high school expansion in 2022. So at this point, would we like to discuss the ranking so that we know whether you guys are comfortable with what we are recommending, or would you like to see some changes before it comes before you on December 13?
Board members?
I have a question.
Sure.
The Berkeley well, is that the close, the well that was there when the school was built?
I don't know exactly. The well, is that when it was built?
The well at Berkeley?
Is that the well that was there when it was built? Is that the closure? We don't know. We don't know that at this point. There is a well, and the city has asked us to remove that.
Continue with the candidate.
Yeah.
I have a question. About the items 14 and 15, the high school expansion, is that any... Maybe this is somewhere, any particular high school? Or is it an expansion based on... Is that to be determined? Like, all three high schools will be expanded?
It is to be determined. At your November 15 meeting, we are fully anticipating the bringing of the enrollment report for the next 10 years. That is a project that could be up for discussion and movement at that time. But right now, they are sitting in the 2021 and 2022 years, based on what we saw in the report last year, but that is subject to change.
But with no names attached?
No names attached.
I have a question about number two.
Yes.
Will that expansion take place within the existing footprint, or will it go beyond the footprint?
The project is to fill in the courtyard that currently exists at Jamestown High School to allow for more space internally. So it doesn't change the footprint of the school, but it does change the components within the building by filling that courtyard in and roofing it, which would require ranking.
And when we see the design of that?
When that... If and when?
I know Virginia Beach has done that with lots of new schools over the years. It's somewhat really can look a little hodgepodgey. It's like, we're going to put a thing here, we're going to put... So I just want to...
If and when that project is funded, we would, of course, go through the design and the construction piece like we normally do.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then, along with that, how... What is the anticipated capacity increase for lunch for the students there at Jamestown? As a result?
Good evening. Are you referring to anticipated square footage and how many more students?
Like, how many more... What's the impact? Is it going to be... Right now, they have so many lunch periods, and it's going to be less lunch periods?
Currently, they're on a three-lunch period. So I couldn't tell you that would be an administrative decision about how many more lunches they would have. But currently, they're on a three-lunch period cycle.
And we're... How far are we over our capacity right now?
I believe we're 129?
139 students over.
And that's going to probably continue to take... So it's way to accommodate 150 kids. So you spread them out. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah. I think the capacity, increased capacity, depends on which design we would choose to go with. So when we move this direction, recognizing the need for expansion and bring back designs, there'll probably be options in the amount of increased capacity depending on what we need. So it's a hard question to put a number on right now because we haven't even seen what it would look like.
But that is, we're trying to accommodate that overcapacity.
Absolutely. Yeah. Jamestown High School cafeteria is extremely crowded at the moment. If you visit it during lunchtime, I'd encourage you to do so. It's hard to get between the tables. And with being 139 over already and an anticipated more in Jamestown next year, it's going to become a growing issue. It also puts in place a bigger core space for when we need to expand Jamestown if we so choose to do so as an organization.
Okay. I just have a question about the well. Where is this well located? And what is its... What's happening to it right now? Is it covered? Is it filled in?
The well is located on the property beyond the baseball fields. It is currently locked in. It's not... If you're talking about filling it in with concrete or something, no, it's not. It's being removed. But it's not filled in.
Is it a wastewater thing? Is it like a... You have to do it for environmental reasons?
Well, the well was on the property, been on the property for a while. And this has been in and out of the CIP. It just continues to get moved. The city of Williamsburg has requested it be removed. They continue to request it be removed.
Berkeley was outside the water system when it was built, so they put a well and septic in when they built the school. So they're probably as old as the school and not been used a long time.
Right.
So I want to compliment the administration for this process. It is markedly better, and I like the direction. I'm completely comfortable with the ranking as it's been presented, and I hope this sets up a new workflow and precedent for future years because I think it's of note that this is... We have two funding bodies for the request for the CIP, and they go through two different processes. So I appreciate your working, doing that advanced work for the board and doing this. So I'm completely comfortable with not only the ranking itself, but also the process and appreciate your kind of breaking new ground on that. So thank you.
Is this something that we will be doing on a yearly basis? So we will have an opportunity next year, for example, should this situation with the walkway at Lafayette High School, if there's something that's coming up that the buses are not... For whatever reason, if there's some issue that remains out there or whatever, it's one of these situations where we can revisit next year and talk about the walkway.
Absolutely.
Talk about any of the capital projects. Any other comments from board members? Thank you, Mrs. Berta.
I'm not quite...
I know you're not done yet. But I do... I know. But let me go. The... I just want to echo Mrs. Cook, that the work that you've done with the city and the county to vet these projects, make sure they understand, and with a planning commission, that serves the school system well to have those discussions at this point. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You know, you may continue.
Thank you. So I wanted to take the opportunity while we had the capital improvement discussion and just review one more time the projects that are in the next immediately funded year to ensure that the board is satisfied with this as we press forward with hopeful that you will adopt on December 13 so we can pass that on to our funding partners. So just a quick review in the next fiscal year 18, the summary of projects. Clarebird Baker, exterior masonry repairs. Rawlsburg HVAC replacement, the design portion of that. The DJ Montague entrance redesign. The DJ Montague sidewalk and parking lot corrections. The Norge entrance redesign. The replacement of electrical equipment in Berkeley's 100 and 200 area. The replacement of the auditorium seating in Berkeley. The roof replacement at Lafayette. The replacement of the walk-in refrigerator and freezer at Tohano. The design phase of the replacement HVAC system at Jamestown. The Jamestown Eves repair. Division parking lot funding. Division fire panel replacements. And the Warhill Pathways Maker Space and Chemistry Lab. If you would like to have any discussion about that or projects that you would like to see moved into fiscal year 18 or projects moved out of fiscal year 18, we certainly can discuss that at this point.
I just... Mr. Chair, I just have a question about what does it mean to re-point in the masonry project for Clarebird Baker? What does that mean exactly if you're going to re-point? I don't understand that word.
Mr. Schnipes?
That's the grout. Yeah, you did not the grout. Put it back there. Just go to Williamsburg.
Wow, that's gross.
I think they've already answered, but it's grout.
Like what I do to my floor in the bathroom?
Yes. Like you're cocking a bathroom.
Yeah. Okay. So like I wanted to...
It's just a fancy word. Paying.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know.
With the renaming of Rawlsburg, and I have no idea how much that's going to cost to do the signage, I'm assuming perhaps under $50,000? Is that the hope?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. Okay.
We would build that into our operational budget.
So that's operational?
Yeah.
And then, there was a... The Maker Lab, the $300,000 on that, there was just some documentation that came from Dr. Heron, so thank you for that. Are we going to talk about that at any point? Okay. It was just there, there's a question about the chemistry classroom?
Yes. Yeah, the chemistry classroom is a separate request from the Maker Space and the Innovation Space, based on the needs of the scheduling of students for chemistry. They're actually underserved with the lab space they have currently.
So is that part of the $300,000?
It's part of it, but it's not part of Warhill Pathways. But it's included in the $300,000.
Okay. So it's... That's what you're saying. Okay. So it's Maker Space Chemistry Lab?
The Maker Space is $270,000. The actual Chemistry Lab is $30,000. So in an effort to tie it with the capital improvement plan, because $30,000 doesn't meet the requirement of the threshold, we join those projects together because both of them are happening at Warhill to leverage that to make it meet the requirement of this capital improvement plan.
Any other comments from board members?
I'll wait till finished.
Have you not done yet?
Not yet, always. And just in summary to recap, this is the five-year plan that is both what the city and county take a look at, even though we develop a 10-year plan for planning purposes. So over the course of five years, we are requesting at this time $52,301,000...
$52 million?
$301,243. And I wanted to provide you a snapshot based on what we were looking at with city and county estimated funding according to their plan from last year as compared to the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. So as you can see with the projects that we're recommending in 2018 and the estimated... That's estimated, they have not released their capital improvement plan for the current year. We are at a $1.6 million overage according to what they estimated that cost to be for 2018. Into 2019, that grows to $4,750,994. In 2020, we are over by two, almost $2.8 million. In 2021, almost $3.8 million. And we don't know what 2022 will look like. So as you consider which projects you may or may not want in and what we know as estimated funding, please know that over the next five years, and really only four years because we don't know what the fifth year of funding is, we're almost $13 million over with our needs at this current time. So that's... This is where the communication part starts with the city and county to determine because we're identifying needs and how we proceed so that we can make sure that our needs are met, but we also balance that with the funding and resources that are available from our partners.
Comments?
So actually, if you drop that $21 million from the total over here, it's... It comes down to, what is it, $30,000? It's like $30,000?
It's still a $13 million gap because I'm only comparing the four years, yes. But if the 2022 number changed, depending upon what we find out from city and county as their funding availability for 2022...
Do we want to do this for the county? Just for ahead?
Yes. We... Several years ago, we did not. When I first arrived in Williamsburg, we did not release our capital improvement plan until your budget, your total budget was adopted in March. And that caused some issues for the city and county as they were planning their budgets. So last year was the first year that we moved our process back. So we are being a little early in our process, but I think that allows the communication to begin and helps us in the long term. So this is an early process with a lot of unknown variables at this time, but it does help as we go forward.
So if we... Let's pretend, let's say that we decide to strip something from the FY '18 request to accommodate the $1.6 million gap that we suspect exists. That's not rem... That's just pushing it. That's just making the next year gap bigger. Yeah. So if it's okay, Jim, I'd like to... I just want to make sure that I understand the rationale for some of these.
Sure.
So if we could just go through them, I'd appreciate it. Starting with this document, the Clarebird Baker, the exterior masonry repairs, I see a structural engineer recommends that. Was that part of the Faithfull &amp; Gold report, or is that something else?
No, that was the year before the Faithfull &amp; Gold report. We asked for the Faithfull &amp; Gold report. That was done by RRMM Act Farkas back in the year before. But we re-verified it again in June. So we asked them to do it in 2015, but because we were doing a new CIP, we wanted an update to make sure that those numbers were still correct. So they verified it again in June this year.
And if we don't do that, then we're at risk for sustained water damage, right? Exterior water?
No, this is just... This is to sustain the building life expectancy. It's Clarebird Baker when it was built. Now it's just kind of like repointing it. You're making things... It's preventative maintenance. You're making your structural leaks happen.
I think Mrs. Cook's point is that with that, if you don't re-point the brick, you have water intruding into the brick and potential bricks falling out, I guess.
the Clarebird Baker, the exterior masonry repairs. I see a structural engineer recommends that. Was that part of the Faithfull &amp; Gold report or is that something else?
No, that was the year before the Faithfull &amp; Gold report. We asked for the Faithfull &amp; Gold report. That was done by RRMM Architects back in, in the year before. But we re-verified it again in June. So, we asked them to do it in 2015, but because we were doing a new CIP, we wanted to upload it, make sure that those numbers were still correct. So, they verified it again in June this year.
And if we don't do that, then we're at risk for sustained water damage, right? Exterior water?
No, this is just, this is to sustain the building life expectancy. It's Clarebird Baker when it was built, now it's just kind of like repointing it. You're making things, it's preventative maintenance, you're making your structural repairs happen.
I think, I think Mrs. Cook's point is that with that, if you don't re-point the brick, you have water intrusion into the brick and, and potential bricks falling out, I guess.
And then Rawlsburg, the HVAC design, the system, so do we know what a useful life is? We know it was installed in 1990. When should we have done this?
The useful life of an HVAC is 20 years.
Great.
Now, we did the gym in 2014, so that's, doesn't need to, that does not need to be done, but the other, the other buildings were 1990.
And then DJ, that's safety and then a regulation, so it is a fairly. Berkeley, electrical equipment.
Those things are original to the building. The building was built in 1966.
Wow.
So, you're talking about updating some wiring and some boxes.
Power panels.
Power panels.
All right. To support all the technology that goes into the building.
Support technology, but some of us obsolete, so, you know, some of our electricians are...
Obsolete, meaning that you can't get repair parts for those breaks down.
Right.
And the auditorium seating.
Yeah.
Okay, so Faithfull &amp; Gold recommended.
Yes, Faithfull &amp; Gold recommended this in their facility condition index report. We also confirmed the estimate cost recently with RRMM Architects. Now, it's not splintering, but it is, was original to the building. And so, if you remember the seats that are here, were here at Blair, they were wooden, they were pretty uncomfortable to sit in, so they recommended they replace those.
Yeah, and so, and this request is, has been confirmed by the school, the school itself is.
Yes.
Yeah, they, they agree. And the roof replacement, I think we've touched on that a time or two.
Discuss that.
And just as a reminder to, you asked about at the school, most of these requests come from, through the principal request. So, they're looking at their facilities months in advance of our CIP when we ask them to put that information in, so.
When something like, you know, at Lafayette High School today, there was a leak plumbing issue, is that, when these kind of things come up that maybe are identified as all of a sudden, pretty big, maybe potentially big maintenance issues, how does that work with this?
The capital improvement plan or things that are $50,000 or more.
Right.
Those kind of items are emergency situations where we have contingency in our operating budget to handle those things.
And they come out of your operational budget?
Yes.
So, like, so like a couple of years ago, they had an issue at Matoka's playground that was 600 or...
Six hundred, six hundred, seven hundred thousand.
Right, and so.
Hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
And that came out of the operations?
Right, right. And I think we had discussions with the county.
We had discussions with the county and they...
About helping them pay for that.
Well, we run into that with the buses too. There's the cost of replacing the buses, which always comes out of the operational budget. And then there's the cost, if you want to actually increase the number of buses, then that becomes a capital, the CIP, that's real. And bust, you know, I'm not happy with the way that's done, but, you know, I guess that's the way, that's the way it's been done because it's, it's quite an expense.
It is.
And we have an aging fleet and we have to replace those.
Well, we are.
We don't replace them, use buses, we buy brand new ones.
Well, we are on a, we're on a replacement cycle now.
Right, oh, I know, I know.
And Julian, your question is for, for major emergent repairs that, that you can't predict and that you, it'll suddenly come out of left field and hit you. Yeah, so that was, that was...
And you want to avoid those, which is part of it.
Which is why we have the CIP, I mean, which is why we have this. I'm just, I'm just thinking of things that happen that are all of a sudden, oh, they're in emergency and then they bring, now all of a sudden, the site principal might say, oh, by the way, we need to completely redo our plumbing.
Yeah, they're, they're, it doesn't happen every year, but so, you know, you have the fire mains at Matoka's and the sinking playgrounds, the fire grounds at Matthew Welly, sinking playgrounds at Matoka's and, you know, that's part of the, part of running 14 different facilities, or all the many different facilities that we run that.
And the age of our facilities, I mean Lafayette was built in 1973, so, yeah, we don't know what type of stuff.
So, yeah, so Lafayette, the roof replacement, we've discussed that. Jamestown, the HVAC design, so we're at roughly the useful life of 20 years, which you said.
Yes.
So, what, what would happen if we pushed that? I mean, I know we would just push it down, but what would happen if we pulled it out of this, this year's recommendation?
We've asked MJT to give us that information recently of what happens because we anticipate that there will be questions coming up. So, we recently asked them, what happens, which of these projects can be pushed and what are the pros and cons? And Kevin Allen, who's at MJT, who is on, is county contract with us, is giving us that information for you. So, I will have a word to that.
Eaves, we've got a little tutorial on that.
Yeah.
Sorry. Clearly not, clearly the tutorial didn't take, sorry. Norwich entrance redesign, got, I got that. So, walk-in, the Toenano walk-in refrigerator, we don't want that to go, right?
No, we don't want that to go. That would destroy and spoil food, so.
Oh, that's expensive.
And again, that was 1992. It's time for those to be replaced, and we have had a lot of work orders on that.
I seem to recall the last CIP that there were these like covered walkways? Is that part of this redesign? It used to say covered walkways.
No, they, there's no.
That's canopy?
That's canopy.
You're talking about.
That's on there. That's, I'm not years out.
Years out, okay, because I was thinking that's something that could...
Last year, we did stone houses.
Yes, and DJ's, DJ canopy's on there to be, be on this summer.
So, I'm trying to grab the one and a half.
It's here, and I'm not seeing this, the portable lights for Lafayette.
It's under $50,000.
Is that in?
It's under $50,000.
Oh, it's under, you're right.
It's under $50,000, so we're taking care of that in the operation budget, and we can do it more quickly as well.
I didn't think it was. Good.
I, I don't see, I mean, I see we're $1.6 million different, but I don't see anything superfluous in this. Nothing jumps out. To get closer to you. Right.
We, talking about the Lafayette roof, I think there's explanations in here about Lafayette roof and useful life and warranties and terms that you were looking at per square, square footage cost, which reduce.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Snipes and his staff have really did a good job of trying to really put all of the details in one place and, and, out of glance for you and verifying all of the, the different estimates right up to date so that we could get you the right information tonight and last week. So, thank you, Mr. Snipes.
So, next steps, November 15th, public hearing?
Correct. November 15th will be a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed CIP with adoption by the school board at your December 13th meeting.
So, at, so November 15th, we have a public hearing, then we also have another discussion opportunity on the agenda for the 15th, and then we vote on the 13th, which is right now our only scheduled meeting in December.
So, if the, if the board wanted to make any adjustments to this, that could be reflected in time for a vote?
Yes.
And now, now is a great time to?
Just now, you, or you get just November 15th?
November 15th will, should have an update on enrollment as well, which may affect some of the board's thinking on some of the projects within the five years.
This is great work. Thank you. Teamwork. Thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burden.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your continued hard work on the capital budgets and operating budgets, all this, all that. 7.01, equity through engagement, one. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, following a request by the board to learn more about what WJCC is doing to address equity issues within WJCC, in particular the gaps, gap groups in student achievement, this evening we are introducing a new series on, on equity. The purpose this evening is really to give a big overview. We're going to define equity within WJCC, and we're going to provide information for the school board and community regarding the strategies and systems we're using to support all, all students and make them successful. This is very much the beginning of a conversation which will take place on over several months, and each time we will focus on a different area or aspect of equity. Why now? The percentage of students identified as economically disadvantaged is over 30% in our system, and there's that constant need to address the, the effects of poverty. Our population of English language learners is increasing yearly. I think in the last year, from this time last year to this, this year, we've increased by 56 students. Our, the meeting the needs of students with disabilities is becoming more complex every, every year, and we've over 1,500 identified students with disabilities within our system. And as you heard from a public speaker tonight, we do have some disproportionality in discipline referrals, and we want to begin to talk about that and, and means and ways that we're addressing that issue as well. So, all of these things are, are here and now, and so we, we really want to start talking about some of the things that we're doing as a system to address some of these ongoing challenges that we have. Very quickly, let me define equity as we're going to define it within WJCC. Our vision says we're going to pursue excellence and champion the success of all students. And when you look at the definition of equity, basically, they're, they're saying much of the same thing. We want to provide each student with what he or she needs to be successful. So, really, it is part of our vision as a system to address the needs of every single student within our system. The striking picture brings it home to some extent. On the left, the students are treated equally, all provided with the same resources, and some don't get over the finish line and can't see into the future. If you look on the right, basically, the students are provided with whatever they need to make them successful, and the equity has been addressed within the system. What have we done so far? In last summer, in July 26, we took all our leadership team, about 70 leaders, down to Virginia Beach to a Region to Equity Through Excellence conference. We not only had the opportunity to learn about equity, but we also had the opportunity to get together in our own group with our own leaders and talk, look at our data and start to examine some of our equity issues. Just this month, I've sent out invitations to launch a Superintendent's Equity Task Force, and the purpose of that is to continue the conversation that was started in Virginia Beach and look at how we can develop our leaders and what other things we need to look at as a system to address issues of equity. And then tonight, we're launching the first of our Equity Through Engagement series, which will go on over a period of months, and each time we'll bring you very different information and specifically address the needs of some particular subpopulations. One key element of success for all students is excellent classroom instruction. The classroom experience where learning is differentiated, engaging, aligned with curriculum standards, and where students are constantly getting feedback on their progress leads to a very successful classroom. And that's why tonight, Mr. Paula, Senior Director of School Performance, is going to give us a, a brief overview about how we're taking steps to engage all students in every single classroom in WJCC. So, this is very much big picture tonight about good instruction for all students. Mr. Paula.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Helping all students reach their potential is every WJCC teacher's ultimate goal. Students need to feel interested, involved, motivated by their learning. Studies show that engaging students in the learning process increases their attention and focus, motivates them to practice critical thinking skills, and promotes meaningful learning experiences. In order to support student achievement, we need to know what to teach, which is also known as our curriculum, and how to teach it, which is the instruction, and then how to assess what students have learned and how to fill any gaps. Solid curriculum, instruction, and assessment must also be supported by professional learning for teachers. We believe that continuous investment in our faculty will result in good classroom instruction for all students. Effective instruction begins with a well-developed curriculum, which serves as a roadmap for what teachers teach. WJCC curricula focuses on collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking skills, and have embedded in them technology, career connections, and resources for differentiated instruction. Curricula are aligned with Virginia's standards of learning and are living documents that are under continual review and revision. Each year, teachers and content coordinators work to review curricula, make adjustments based on new resources and input from teachers, and embed engaging activities and project-based learning opportunities. K-12 curriculum guides and unit plans provide a unit-by-unit roadmap of the objectives, key terms, and resources for each unit in a course, and are housed digitally for ease of access for teachers. Making connections between what students learn in class and the world around them is key to student success. Students across the division are taking part in project-based learning opportunities in all content areas. Taking advantage of a major attraction in our own backyard that inspires high student engagement, some of our students have taken part in designing their own mini roller coaster models. In project-based learning activities such as this one, students see how geometry and physics go into the design of the perfect loop. They research how different materials, such as steel or wood, affect the rider's experience, and they test out each design to make corrections prior to presenting the coaster to their classmates. It's projects such as the one, this one, that bring to life the four Cs of collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking. Many of our students visit local sites such as Jamestown Island and Colonial Williamsburg to experience firsthand how different life was in another time period. They do water analysis of the James and York rivers, and they'll visit local businesses to see how manufacturing is alive and well locally. Making instruction relevant to students by showing them how their learning is interconnected helps engage all students in their education. As the curriculum revision process progresses, we continue to look for ways to provide high interest, project-based learning opportunities for all learners to, to support their successes. I'm hoping Ronnie will, thank you, Ronnie. It's important to remember that WJCC's focus is good instruction for all students. In order to ensure that all students achieve success, teachers collaborate on a daily basis, whether it's through grade level planning sessions, use of formative data to monitor students' progress, or participation in peer observations, teachers are continually working together to support student achievement. Teachers have extensive knowledge of instructional strategies and work tirelessly to select the appropriate tool from their toolkit for each individual student. The use of manipulative and hands-on learning tools, small group instruction, and integrating technology helps teachers meet the individual needs of the students in their classrooms. Understanding the starting point of each member of their class and how they can best help their students to navigate success is an important skill that our teachers need to have. Teachers use measures of student growth to assess where individual students are on their learning path, and then apply multiple strategies to meet their needs. As we focus on incorporating more project-based learning activities in our classrooms, students are working together to solve problems and finding out that learning is a process of trial and error and continuous improvement. The role of teacher is transforming to one of facilitator of learning, providing feedback to students not only on what they're learning, but how they're doing it. In days past, the image of students quietly sitting in rows listening to a teacher is what came to mind when one thought of a classroom. WJCC students are experiencing a different construct of instruction, problem solving through critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. Teachers build relationship with their students so they can personalize learning to meet their needs, and they work together with students to develop individual goals. their needs, and they work together with students to develop individual goals and ways of achieving them. In order for our students to achieve success, it is important that we invest in our teachers every year so that they are ready to deliver quality instruction to our students. WJCC's Professional Development Plan for Teachers is a long-range cyclical plan that focuses on student engagement, achievement, and there are three strands. One strand of our PD cycle, which is interrelated with all the others, is high student engagement strategies, assessment of and for learning, and using data to foster collaborative planning. Teachers meet as grade-level or content teams to analyze data and make informed decisions about instructional strategies, flexible grouping, and acceleration within a lesson. Many of our teachers participate in peer observations and provide feedback to each other on instructional practices. WJCC's New Teacher Orientation focuses on curriculum, instruction, and assessment, as well as incorporating technology into lessons and how to support our English language learners and students with disabilities. This August, we held WJCC's first professional learning conference, where teachers were able to learn from their peers and focus on their theme, Dream, Do, Design, and Do. Professional learning isn't limited to classroom teachers. Division administrators also participate in professional development that supports student learning, good teaching, and professional growth. Administrators participate in leadership and learning activities in which they focus on gaining a collaborative definition of good instruction, providing feedback to teachers, and using data to improve instruction. WJCC administrators conduct collaborative observations with their peers and members of central office staff to ensure that they're speaking a common language of learning. Leadership capacity building is another important focus for our division. As a member of the School University Research Network, or CERN, at the College of William and Mary, WJCC is able to participate in CERN's Principal Academy. This professional learning community provides opportunities for administrators to learn more about their instructional role in schools and also gives experienced principals opportunities to act as mentors. The combination of professional learning for both teachers and administrators enables all those involved in student learning to have a common understanding of what high-quality instruction is. Administrators and teachers annually look at data from walkthroughs to choose the year's student engagement focus, emphasizing those strategies which will have the highest impact on student achievement. Through solid curriculum, engaging instruction, and formative assessment, as well as sustained professional learning for teachers and administrators, we are providing all students with the building blocks needed to aid them on their paths to success as lifelong learners. Dr. Heron?
So what we tried to give you is just a quick insight into what happens in the regular classroom, because that's where we call it Tier One Instruction, and that's the kind of things we're trying to embed in instruction every single day that impacts every single student in the classroom. And so it was very a high-level overview of instruction, good instruction for all. Up on the screen in front of you, there are a series of different areas that we want to focus in on over the next several months. So for example, early childhood interventions and Title I Instructional Support, those are our systems that are very much supporting economically disadvantaged students. We'll have a specific session on English language learners and the support systems we're providing for those students. We'll have a specific session on students with disabilities and talk about the programs and support systems we have there. We then shift to the non-traditional learning options, and you can see as the list goes on. And the last one starts to focus in on disproportionality in discipline and what we're trying to do in that area. And the idea behind it is to provide the board with a very quick insight and allow some discussion each month and some feedback on some of, particularly our students and our subpopulations. So that's where we're planning to go in the next short period of time. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them at this point in time. Doctor Behrs?
Yeah, this is, yeah, obviously, a bit of a topic of mine. Is it possible, as we go through all of those topics, to touch on literacy? Because literacy touches all of those, and I would hope that it's not just one topic that we deal with later, later in the...
I think you'll find that reading and literacy is a focus in several different areas, and a lot of the strategies that are in place are impacting all of the various subgroups. So it will be something we'll definitely be threading through. And then in that session, we'll actually give you a sense of how we're refocusing our efforts in promoting literacy within our system, and that really started this year, last year, this year, developing a whole document where we're all doing the same thing and speaking the same language for the first time.
Any comments, board members?
This is great. Thank you very much for the high-level overview. In the future, also, if you can touch on which initiatives you're actually going to be potentially changing or tweaking or whatever to hope to address the gap that exists. Something, you know, we're doing all these great things, and we have an achievement gap. So what are the plans for the division to try to narrow the gaps specifically as it relates to all of these topics? That would be helpful to me.
Yeah, and we'll bring some data. We'll bring, for example, in our Title I Instructional Support, we'll be talking about something that just happened and was brought into place last year and the impact that it should begin to have on our opportunity gaps.
Yeah, and I really, I echo that. We talked about this before. The bottom line, it's always going to be, how do we know what we're doing is actually making a change or having somebody become, you know, a better learner? And we can't always rely on SOL, so there are other things that we have to do as well. So I, yeah, I look forward to that.
Okay, thank you.
My only comment is, Mr. Kennedy, whenever our community members keeps bringing statistics about the disparity between discipline, is it possible to move that up any sooner? If it's, I mean, I don't want to cause a crunch, but I would like to see how we're addressing that and...
Okay. We can absolutely look at the reordering. We were starting with early childhood and coming up through the system, but maybe after Title I Instruction, we could bring it in before English language learners. We'll relook and send you the schedule. We didn't put dates on specifically because your input's perfect tonight. We can certainly make, move things around.
I mean, if the rest of the board thinks that's of interest, I would like to address some of his concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, board members?
Thank you for starting the conversation.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be leaving the conversation, but thank you for starting it. So I think for, since this is a public discussion, so for the public, how does the classroom look so different? Because we have a population that's observing the schools from the outside, how does the classroom look different than the experience with, say, of someone of our age peers? And how would you describe what that does to us economically? Like what you're saying? I thought it was pretty good. Anyway, and how do we, what is the impact on qualifications for teachers and the kind of support and coordination for new teachers in working with this kind of system? Particularly, we keep hearing and we're aware that there's some behavioral and disciplinary issues going on. What is it, what is the supports that we're giving to teachers? I think you're doing some staff development, but are we helping with, like, de-escalation, cultural awareness, those other things? But if you're going to have a classroom that has to have kids diversely working in teams, how well-prepared have we worked with our staff, and what's the impact on budget training and staff development?
Well, I can speak. Our New Teacher Orientation really is fairly comprehensive. We do a lot on instruction and what that looks like, and we're very fortunate in that teacher prep programs are sending to us some great quality candidates. But they do get some modules on how to work with our English language learners and support them, how to work with our special needs students, and I know that Mrs. Bourgeois and her team spend quite a bit amount of time.
Do we still have mentoring programs? I know at one time there was a mentoring kind of program.
Yes, we still have mentoring for our first-year teachers, and that goes on for a full year. And I think there are some modules in within that to help with discipline and also instruction.
For those of us in the viewing public that sat in those classrooms with 65 one head behind the other, it's trying to understand how this operates is really important for them when we talk about 21st century learning.
And I think that if you're coming from the outside and you're used to seeing students in rows being very, very quiet and compliant, what looks like chaos is really collaboration and communication and problem solving. So from the outside, it might look like there's a lot of things going on and you're uncomfortable. But for those of us that are, have been in the classroom or been trained, you actually see the excitement of learning and kids talking about the learning rather than being receivers of information and manipulating the learning rather than just writing it down now.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, thank you. And building on what Ms. Minor said, and just for the public's understanding, in addition to not seeing a group of children statically sitting in their chairs with one teacher at the front, the video we saw, that group of children for the next exercise might be a totally different group of children. There might be more than one facilitator instructor in the room. Can you talk a little bit about the impact on, you know, class size, on budget, on other resources coming into the room? Can you just, just for a few minutes, talk about that?
Well, it's taking some creativity, because our class sizes aren't getting any smaller, per se. Our teachers are getting very, very adept at doing small group instruction in stations at the elementary level. We do have some aides that are also supporting that effort, but you'll be able to see that students are immensely well-trained and accustomed to the stations, so that we may have one group of students directly working with a teacher, but the other students know that they will rotate through activities, and they're used to having the processes put in place right from the very, very beginning. And so you'll see that all the way through elementary through middle school, that they are so accustomed to working that way that the transition time is fairly smooth. I, as a secondary-level person, when I went in and saw all these students just automatically going, okay, it's time to switch, and they knew what they were doing, was fairly impressed the very first time I saw it. So teachers nowadays are very, very creative in the small group instruction, lots of manipulative and engaging activities, and then flexible, as you said. The group that might be this way for reading might be a different-looking group for math.
Any other comments from board members?
Jumping off from where Mrs. Minor, Mrs. Cook went, the project-based learning and lots of things going on in the classroom is certainly engaging for the students, and they get engaged in their learning, and I think very beneficial. But it's also a lot of work for our teachers. The professional development helps, and it helps them to come through those strategies quicker, but it is a lot more demanding on our teachers every day to prepare for class. And as a community, and I guess even as a society, we have to realize the demands that we're putting on our teachers and kind of walk ourselves through it if we think we're being ethical and equitable with our teachers. So it's, you know, this is not making the teacher's job easy. So a lot of work that goes into that.
As I was reflecting on the, as you mentioned, some people would say it's chaos. There are some, I'm wondering whether there's an interconnection with the project-based learning and some of the discipline issues for those youngsters who don't have those school readiness skills and those kind of adaptability or who really can't manage chaos? I guess if you call it chaos, but that kind of disorder, that's, is that maybe an underlying issue in some ways, and maybe in our elementary school kinds of things? They haven't learned the skill sets to handle the moving around and leaving what they want to work on, kind of. But anyway, that's just a thought. I have no idea. Just throwing it out there. As I leave.
But thank you, Dr. Heron, thank you, Mr. Paula. You're very informative, and I look forward to the continuing discussions. That takes us to policies. Mrs. Young, Mrs. Cook, you just want to run us through them?
Okay, the first one we're going to talk about is, you'll see it's BDDH/KD. And the first thing that you see is... Do you want to interrupt?
No, I'm sorry, my computer's not working.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you're not getting out of that just because...
Just keep going. You do the first five.
Because these are just so thrilling and exciting. You'll notice that the first one is the VSBA, and then the second one is our current one. We've made some changes. We've deleted, we've deleted some of the verbiage. And then we have, this first one is called Public Participation at School Board Meetings. It's under School Board Governance and Operations. And I think I have to refer to Ms. Theresa, but I think it's going to be changed to be DKD, or is it just going to be KD?
Both.
Both, okay.
BDDH/KD.
So if it's not convoluted enough, we're now making it more so. So anyway, this one talks about what, basically, what Mr. Behrs says is his parliamentarian. And you'll notice that down at the bottom, because of recent changes in what is happening in the Commonwealth, it says the board, that's probably the most important part of that, is the board will not hear comments about any individual employee or student while in public sessions. In fact, we can only request that that happens. So is there any discussion about that one?
I think we're good.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. This one is BG/GVD, Board Staff Communications. And the first one has been completely, if you look at BG/GVD, it's been completely, the first three paragraphs have been completely redlined, and then it's just basically the last part that is being kept with an addition of BGD. It's in blue on there. And then the second part of that, if I can go on, is what the VSBA recommends. So on each of these, there's going to be a VSBA recommendation and then what we as a school division do. The next one is 8.03, Revised, Recode and Rename Policy KDB, Public Information Request FOIA to Policy KBA, Request for Information. And the first one, whoops, at the wrong place. The first one is the VSBA policy. The second one is our policy. And you can see that we've changed that just basically to, instead of Public Information Request in FOIA, we've changed the title to just Request for Information. And then we've added Virginia Freedom of Information Act FOIA. And then a lot of this has been redlined, with the most important thing is the paragraph in sentences 17 through 22.
Just wanted to point out on lines 19 and 20 that there are two typos. It should say the FOIA officer serves as a point of contact and then coordinates.
Okay, good, thank you. So are there any questions or comments?
Just a question about, I'm assuming that this whole, like, the minimum search time and cost and all that is somewhere else. I mean, like, where would someone know how, what the timeline and cost and all that?
Once this version is approved by the board, we will create a regulation that includes that information. FOIA changes pretty yearly, so we'll be able to adjust the regulation to meet whatever the FOIA law says for that year.
Okay, so we have this policy, and then it will point to the regulation that will be clearly identified somewhere on the website.
Currently, we have all of the information about our process on the website.
Okay. And I think part of the reason for changing it to this format was because it does change as, since she goes to those conferences every year where she learns all of this exciting information, so. I mean, it's the law, we have to comply. We're trying. We do comply. We're not just trying. Okay. Your turn?
Can you do about the first five?
You want me to do the next two also?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just pick one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just pick one.
Okay, 8.04, Revised Policy GA Personnel Policies and Goals. And again, down at the bottom, this is Policy GA. I do not believe that V S B A -- is this the one that V S B A does not have? They do have.
I think Mr. Baker's here to address any questions and take you through some of the changes.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Heron. We do have the next five or seven policies. I think I understand I'm between you and watching the Cubs game, but nothing's --
What's going on?
Cubs are one, nothing. Allegedly.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Nothing's changing with our current practices of how we do it. Basically, what we're trying to do is align with V S B A, and our attorney has recommended the changes I'm going to present. The first policy is Policy GA. This has been last revised, it was 1984. We're trying to simplify our policy and mirror the V S B A policy. This did come up in our subcommittee, you know, do we need to have this? It kind of looks like a policy about policies. But basically, I did go back to the attorney and say, "Do we have to have it? And do you recommend it?" And they still do recommend it. And basically, it sets the parameters of what all the G policies are going to be. And our attorney has recommended this change. The next -- well, I'll wait. I was going to go on to the next policy. The next policy is Policy G B C D, the Drug-Free Workplace. This was last revised in 1990. We are recommending to revise, recode it, and rename it to G B E A, the Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace. Again, to update our policy to more closely resemble the V S B A policy. And basically, what this policy is about is employees may not have unlawful controlled substance or alcohol on school property. And our attorney has recommended these changes. The next policy I have is Policy G B E B, Staff Wellness and the Regulation that Goes with It, G B E B R Staff Wellness. This was last revised in 1986. There is no V S B A policy, G B E B Staff. We'll have to have a policy for it. So we're recommending deleting the policy and deleting the regulation with it. The next one I have is Policy G B L Personnel Records. This was last revised in 1984. We want to update our policy to resemble the V S B A policy. And basically, this is just about our employees having access to their personnel information. One of the questions that came up in the subcommittee on this one, if you -- one of the things that is attached is the V S B A policy. And there is a fourth paragraph in the V S B A policy, and one of the committee members said, "I see that you all have deleted that fourth paragraph in the V S B A policy." And I went back to the attorneys, and they just said it was just a repeat of the law, and it was just a restatement. We didn't need it, so just tried to simplify the policy. So we deleted it. The next policy I have is G C A Professional Staff Positions. This was last revised in 1983. And we want to recode it and rename ours to correspond with the V S B A policy, G C Professional Staff. And it's just basically talking about teachers must hold a teacher license. And so it just defines that. And our attorney has recommended these changes. The next policy I have is Policy G C E Substitute Teachers. This was last revised in 1999. We are recommending to revise, rename, to correspond with the V S B A policy of G C E Part-Time and Substitute Professional Staff Employment. And this gets into the definition of substitute teachers and other part-time employment.
Do you have a definition for possesses good moral character?
Good moral character is actually defined by law, and it's actually in the code, Virginia Code. And it gets into the issue of what people have to do to revoke a teacher license. And so good moral character in the Commonwealth of Virginia is a requirement for licensure. It's in the code. It basically means that none of the grounds for revocation applies. That would be a convicted felon, falsification of records, burglary, embezzlement, forgery, fraud, assault, or battery.
You hadn't answered my question, Janice.
I anticipate.
We had a long discussion about that also.
Good question. The next policy I have is Policy G C Q A B Tutoring for Pay. This was last revised in 1974. We're looking to simplify our policy to mirror V A policy, and our attorney has recommended the change.
So when you, at the, when you adopted, at the bottom there, when you revised that, you adopted it from 5, 1474 to what?
I'll pause it. Did you hear your question?
The line 22?
Well, it will be updated to now, once it's adopted.
Okay. I just didn't know what the red one was for.
It was a typo?
We had a lot of days there.
141st day of May, 1974.
Okay. All right?
And I heard the score is 3-0.
Miss Young, it sounds like you got the short straw on that whole deal.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for helping out, Mrs. Cook. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. That brings us to 9.01 Personal Actions. Can I have a motion for approval of the Personnel Actions that's presented this evening?
I live that we approve the policies --
Personnel Actions that's presented this evening.
This evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's moved in second to approve the Personnel Actions that's presented this evening. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 10.01 Board Member, Board Matters. Any comments from board members this evening?
I want to say something. I want to thank Mrs. Minor for participating and for being willing to come forth. It's been a pleasure to serve with her. I think she brought historical perspective, which I think so many of us new members needed at that time. So thank you, Mrs. Minor. Secondly, my hats go off again because last year, I remember the CIP process. It was very, it seemed like it wasn't on very stable ground. But thank you, Ms. Berta, and for, and working on the CIP process and making it solid. I feel like we're on very solid footing right now. And even though we have a major shortfall of cash, if all of your hard work could help us get it, I think you've done it. But I certainly appreciate it because I just feel like I understand it so much better, and I feel like the communication between the city and county has improved dramatically. And I think there's a feeling of cooperation, and I totally appreciate that. And I want to wish Dr. Heron happy birthday. She's just turned 21, so.
And Mrs. Serza, I'm sure.
Is it your birthday too? Oh, my goodness.
So she can be a substitute teacher.
We've all got a good moral character part.
Happy birthday, Janet.
Any other?
I want to echo Mrs. Young's appreciation for Ms. Minor, for both her historical and at times hysterical support for this young board. And I think we've been well-tutored, and so thank you so much for all of your help. And we will miss you. Happy birthday to the two women on my right -- left, sorry, my left. And I just wanted one comment about the Rawlsburg renaming. I would like to really encourage the community to go on the website, click on the survey, and not be limited to just the suggestions that the students at Rawlsburg came up with. Just there is that option for other names, and to feel free to go ahead and suggest whatever names that you think that we would be interested in and looking at. And also, thank you, Ms. Berta and Mr. DePaula for your presentations tonight. I really appreciated it.
I'll make mine short so we don't miss too much more of the game.
Let's go Cubs.
It's going in for us.
Again, the sentiments for Ms. Minor. Thank you for stepping up again and serving along with us, even though some of the things that you said you didn't want to have to do. And thank you to the staff for the presentations this evening. Very much appreciated.
All right, gosh, there's not much left to say except just about everything, but I just would echo, I very much appreciate the kind of interaction we get to do during our work sessions now. And I look very much forward to those topics coming up in the future to talk about, to get a better understanding of it. I really like the new CIP process and how well it's presented and very understandable, and I commend. And I look forward to our climate survey later this fall.
I'd like to echo everyone's thanks for excellent staff work tonight. Well, not tonight, for the months that led up to tonight. So thank you. Happy birthday to both of you. And Mary, it's been a real pleasure serving with you. I feel like I've gotten to serve with a legend. You've been a life.
You need a cane, get out of here.
Yeah. No, you are a lifelong advocate for children in this community, and you've dedicated your life to that. So it was a pleasure to serve with you and get to see you in action. So thank you for stepping up. A few just reflections. This Saturday was Kids' Day at the Williamsburg Farmers Market, and the School Health Initiative Program was out in force, and kids were running around the market gaining, doing a treasure hunt for, to get produce. It was really cool to watch them excited about eating fresh vegetables and fruits. I wanted to say that I've seen the word about the Rawlsburg name, public input process from a variety of sources already, so I'm really excited that the public is embracing that and sharing that information, encouraging people to get involved. I also wanted to say that I had the good pleasure of attending an event at Jamestown Settlement last week sponsored by the James City County E D A, where they honor a business each year. And I was struck by the speech of the honoree that they mentioned part of the reason they were here and raising their family was because of the schools. And so the schools and the quality of education here is a common thing I hear among businesses in the community, so it's something I think to be proud of. I wanted to thank Kitty Hall, James City County's Kitty Hall, for her help with securing the search form. Her work was exceptional, incredible professional, so I wanted to thank her publicly. And lastly, I just wanted to say about the walkway that has, that we've heard a lot about, the walkway between Lafayette and the Warhale Sports Complex, that the James City County Parks and Rec Department is in the process of updating their master plan. There's a survey associated with that and a couple of public meetings. I would encourage anyone who's interested in communicating with Parks and Rec and the idea of connectivity between our major facilities in this community to go and have your voice heard. I'm not sure if it will result in anything, but it is certainly an avenue that would be appropriate to express those thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. I'd like to say happy birthday to Dr. Heron and Ms. Serza, and all the good work you've done for us in the past year and the work you'll do for us in the coming years. Thank you for everything that you, everything that you've done for us. We started the superintendent's search, not only didn't start it tonight, we started about a month ago. We put the RFP out, and we've done a lot of work in evaluating those RFPs. And as I think was laid out tonight for the public and for us, there's a lot of work to go. And we're going to have to be real flexible and, you know, very diligent in meeting our timeline. And I'd echo Mrs. Cook's thoughts on Kitty. She did a great job. She was professional and is a wonderful representative of the county and the school system. Even our consultants mentioned that, how professional that she was. So that was, that was great. A week from today, make sure you do your constitutional responsibility. Ms. Minor, it's been a pleasure serving with you. We join a long list of those who have served with you, and we appreciate that.
My lord. That was very nice.
There was a long list.
There was a long list. You're actually not done until the election is certified, so if we have hanging chads or a plethora of write-in votes, you may get back with us in a couple of weeks. Thank you, thank you, and we appreciated your guidance and input with that.
With that, let me say thank you to all of you for serving with you. It's been great. I think that you have everything you need to work with a new superintendent and move this division forward with the excellent staff. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. -- well, first of all, let me say happy birthday to Dr. Ellen and Ms. Serza. I'd like to thank Ms. Serza for her many years of trying to keep me straight, which is a central thing. It is an honor to serve in this community and this school. Anyway, it's really about the students and making sure that they have the opportunities to succeed in their dreams. I'd like to thank the staff and all the teachers and all the work that they do, Mr. Snipes and his crew out there keeping our buildings clean, and the buses running, and the food served. It's a lot of work. I feel sort of guilty that I'm leaving you as you begin the search, but I know that you have, both candidates seem to have the smarts to do good work with you, so I wish you well on that. And I am, I have several nightmares about hanging chads and broken machines in Port Antonio. And I have to say, I have, I've been saying, you know, Venus, that everything goes well on Election Day for all of us. So, but it's been an honor, and you're all wonderful to work with. And I think if you continue your opening candidate relationships with each other, you'll do very well for the school division. And thank you for all the staff for all the work. And Betsy, if you need help doing any of that work, let me know. One I'm available. Anyway, thank you.
Upcoming events, November 29th at 1:30, our Policy Committee will meet again in Room 113 in the Stryker Center. Because they haven't had enough, maybe next time, Mrs. Cook will go first.
We're going to get past 1974.
And the V S B A Annual Conference here at the Williamsburg Logic Conference Center is November 16th through November 18th, and several board members are going for some professional development there. Our calendar through the balance of the year, November 15th, 6 o'clock, in County Building F. We have a closed session followed by a public hearing on the CIP at 6:30 in Building F, as well as a regular meeting immediately following the public hearing in Building F on December 13th. Closed session at 6 o'clock in the Stryker Center, followed by a work session on accident items at 6:30 on December 13th, also in City Council Chambers. With that, I think we have set our agenda, Ms. Serza. We know where we're going. And let's go Cubs. Meeting adjourned.